Call me in order, please. Please rise. And I ask you to join me in a moment of reflection on the business that's before us this evening. And please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please take the roll.
Alderman Basso.
Here.
Alderman Begley.
Here.
Alderman Violet.
Here.
Alderman Clifford.
Here.
Alderman Key.
Here.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Here.
Alderman McGovern.
Here.
Alderman McGrogan.
Here.
Mayor, City Clerk, Treasurer, Attorney General.
All right. No special presentation tonight. Under the consent calendar, I've got four items. Approval of minutes of a city council meeting from August 3rd, 2021, along with the approval of payroll and voucher list for the period ending August 13th, 2021. Then we have an approval for a request from the Salvation Army to conduct their annual red keel campaign from November 1st through December 24th, 2021 at pre-approved private property locations within the city of Palos Heights in accordance with the city codes. And then finally, the approval of a special use event permit by Trinity Christian College to conduct their 3.15K walk and run on Saturday, November 6th, 2021 in accordance with the city codes. Need a motion to approve the consent calendar. Second by Alderman Clifford, second by Alderman Violet.
I have a question about the consent calendar. The minutes from the last meeting, some of the vote recordings suggested that there were eight people here, and I believe there were five people here. I don't know if you caught that tag.
I did. I did. I saw that. That was pretty good.
So...
I changed all the fives but forgot to change the eights. I'll reflect that. So thank you for bringing it to my attention.
Okay. So it'll be with that correction.
All right.
Which is vote?
Roll call.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Begley.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
All right. There's no sealed bids to be opened tonight. Just a couple of things under my report. First of all, as I mentioned last meeting, kids are starting to go back to school. You know, please be cognizant of that as you drive through town, not only the kids but the school buses also that stop frequently for the individual kids to pick them up. So this is the time when all of a sudden, one day, there's a school bus in front of you that you didn't see last week. So keep that in mind. As of right now, the city of Chicago, as you may have heard on the news tonight, issued a mask mandate for all indoor participation in the city. That is not a statewide mandate. It's in the city of Chicago. The state has not done that as of this afternoon. May do that, may not. The governor's office has not relayed any information to us. So as of right now, it's just a recommendation that people go into indoors, wear a mask, but it's not mandated at this point in time. Just kind of give you a little point of information, some information we got from the Department of Mental Health. Seventy-five point three percent, nine thousand four hundred and forty-two people in Palos Heights have had at least one shot, and sixty-five point three percent, eight thousand one hundred and seventy-eight people have had both vaccinations. So we're not totally there, but compare that to Palos Hills that has a fifty-three percent have one dose and forty-two percent have two doses. I mean, that's by comparison. But then on the other side, Palos Park has ninety percent of the people are fully vaccinated. So this gives you an idea of where we stand in the scheme of things. And the numbers aren't bad from our standpoint, but there's still something to be out there. So if you haven't been vaccinated, obviously, it's a personal opinion at this point in time, but please consider it just for your safety and the safety of all the other individuals throughout town and throughout the United States. Some other things in my report, we had a liquor hearing on, let's see what day was that? That was on August 3rd for the new restaurant opening up in town, actually called the Haven Indoor Golf. And Don Perchelle, you're here if you want to just kind of give a little retail idea what you're going to be doing there in the old Renies Pharmacy or half of the Renies Pharmacy.
Half of Renies Pharmacy.
Right.
Thank you. Good to be here. Good to, I'll say, come full circle. I grew up in Palos Heights, and good to be back and open in the business. So it's going to be a premier indoor golf facility. We're going to have four state-of-the-art bays. We're going to have food, beef sandwiches, pizza, paninis, nachos, and hope to be open probably from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Going to make a decision on the fair weather, you know, when it's predominantly a cold weather indoor type of facility. So, you know, come mid-April of next year, you know, might be scaled back some hours.
Don and his partner Dave Heidi, who's also came into the hearing and, you know, fulfilled all the requirements of a hearing, and I felt comfortable with what they're doing there. I think it's going to be a draw to the city, not just a restaurant. It's actually a destination point where people will be coming into town for something different than just having dinner. I mean, the main thing, obviously, is your golf simulators that you'll be having there. And I happened to be talking yesterday to the president of Trinity Christian, and he was very excited that they were going to have it. He said maybe his golf team can even use them. So...
Yeah, it's one of the things we're going to try to do is bring it to schools and help them with their teams and make the facility.
Yeah. It's something different for Palos, but I think it's a step in the right direction to get something other than just, you know, restaurants and some other things here. So if anyone have any questions of Don, yes?
Using your facility, will it give me a three-stroke gain?
No promises.
All right. We'll see a prediction now. Good luck.
Thank you.
As Tom says, not a magic machine.
I need all the help I got after the last thing.
All right. Any other questions? But then, under ten, a motion to increase the number of liquor licenses then?
Motion to adopt.
Move by Alderman Key, second by Alderman Clifford. Discussion. Roll call.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
All right. Then finally, under my report, I need an ordinance passed for the COVID local fiscal recovery funds. These are funds that are given out, I guess for lack of a better word, from the federal government through the state for recovery from losses due to the epidemic we've suffered over the last year. We're in line to receive a little over $1.7 million, and there are specific things we can use them for, water and sewer projects, any losses we had in operations of the city. While our sales tax numbers were fairly steady last year throughout the whole COVID pandemic, we also, we did have some losses to the health facility and recreation because we couldn't run the programs and things like that. So this will help us recover those losses. So I need a motion to approve us to apply for these funds. Move by Alderman Key, second by Alderman Clifford. Let's do a roll call on that.
Really need a vote?
Yeah.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Okay. And then we will proceed to, we've been going to some webinars and the like about how to proceed to get these funds to us. They should be actually fairly quick. They're saying within thirty days you should get half the money.
Some of the towns have already gotten it.
Some, yeah, some of the towns have already gotten some of the money. So we're moving along with this. So that's the end of my report. City Clerk?
No.
City Treasurer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
State Treasurer's report for the month ending July 31st. The general fund began the month with $3,913,219. Revenues totaled $789,699. Expenses in the general fund were $1,344,578. Other source used $4,886, giving an ending cash balance in the general fund of $3,353,454. All funds began July with $19,622,183. Revenues totaled $1,537,658. Expenses for the month were $2,155,436. Other source used $769, giving an ending cash balance in all city funds of $19,5174. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Need a motion to approve the Treasurer's report?
I'll make it.
Move by Alderman McGovern, second. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman McGovern, McGrogan. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Communications, anyone have? Citizens?
Mr. Mayor, I do.
I'm sorry.
Just one simple one. Jack, tomorrow, happy birthday.
Thank you. On that note, I'd just like to say something. Jerry, and he can resonate to it, that I don't know if Jerry knew him, but I knew him. And tomorrow, on my birthday, I'm going to be spending it at Abraham Lincoln Memorial Cemetery for a friend and veteran that passed away due to age in Orange. Back in that day, it was a terrible thing. A lot of people have been affected by it.
Yep.
We're going down there to pay honor to him and his last time. And so that's where I'll be spending my birthday. There'll be no cakes, and no lights, and no candles. But there'll be a solemn prayer set and a 21-gun salute. So just to show you that those veterans from our time and era are slowly fading away. And if you see them, give me your respect and do, and tell them to jab well done. They deserve it. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
You mentioned earlier about the other statistics on the COVID. One of the other, and I know many businesses are trying to figure out what to do, when to open, what to require, et cetera. It's pretty much almost on everybody's mind that he has a company or employees. And one of the things that has been brought to my attention is there are some other options for people that might be reluctant to get the shots, especially some of the younger folks. And it's the antibody test. You can get it like a CVS or a Walgreens. And a lot of them, I think, I don't know if they charge or not, some people tell me they were $30. Some people said they were free. But what that does is at least tells you whether or not you have the antibodies to resist the COVID, you know, the, for lack of a better word, germ, that may be in your system. And so even if someone said, no, I didn't get the shot, but you, if you know them and you really feel they should, say, how about going and getting the antibody shot? Because it would still, and I just had to go in for something at one of the hospitals, and they just gave it to me routinely, and it has a rating system, and it'll tell you how strong your antibodies are. So if you're like on a one, you better take some vitamins. And if you're a 10, you know, whatever, and I think it was a one to 10 system, then you're in good shape for at least that day. But they also pointed out that even on the COVID shot, it's always just a snapshot in time because no one really has any data to say how long in each, everybody here in this room could have a different amount of time that the COVID shot is lasting in your system. So I'm to, I kind of believe that something's better than nothing for the people that don't want to get the shot. Maybe this would be kind of a middle-of-the-road type of a situation.
Following up on that, now, I had COVID. I had it for two days, except the only problem with it, follow-up with him, I tested positive for three more months before I finally went down. And I had had the two shots in between, just to let you know. So please, follow up, get the shots. This new shot that's going to be coming out, go get it. Go get it. It's just going to be just like, like when we were kids. Remember, we would get the polio shots, and you have to go get a booster every year. So please, don't disregard this one. These are serious, and I just ask you to keep following up with them.
Any else? All right. Citizens wish, and can you address the council? Anyone?
Report to standing committees. Finance?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have any really important report since you already came up with a million seven, and Jim came up with about nineteen million reasons. So I will just leave it at that. They're in pretty good shape financially. And as the mayor said, some of the funds that we would get from the government will certainly help. And I think for the first time, once that comes in, the city will actually tap an all-ins account balance of over $20 million unless something unusual happens. That's the end of my report.
Public Safety, Alderman Basso.
Yes, Mayor, I have no items on the agenda, but I have a couple of public interest notifications I'd like to present. First one is on distracted drivers. This is a report that I received from chief on public, for public safety. The National Safety Council says 40,000 deaths a year are due to distracted driving. Distracted driving is defined as anything that diverts attention away from the task of driving. And obviously, you can figure out what the number one item of distraction might be today and for the past fifteen or twenty years, and that's the cell phone. So every time you pick up the cell phone, you are using functions that should be, your brain should be using for driving. All of the same functions are incorporated into both of those tasks. And when you start using your phone and texting, you're in the most dangerous situation for driving that you can begin. Eleven teens die every day in driving accidents. Teens are 400 times more likely to be in a crash than adults are. And I don't think that report is picking on teens, but probably all of these things are correlated together. Teens are probably on their phone much more than adults might be while they're driving. Teens might be more distracted for a variety of reasons that perhaps adults are not. And the driving is a very, very important and sometimes dangerous situation. It takes 13 seconds to refocus your mind to the task of driving once you have been distracted. The 13 seconds is this long, from now until now? That's a long time to try to refocus on a task. And I'm sure we've all found ourselves in that situation where suddenly we snap out of it and say, how did I get here? What happened? What happened? What was behind me? And I'm here safely, fortunately. Beware of driving distracted. That includes things like reading and eating amongst the other things. It's not just texting. It's not just your telephone. A lot of things can take your attention away from the road. One out of four crashes, though, is due to texting. That's a big number. Every year, there are 421,000 injured individuals who, based up to the fact that they were distracted on one reason or another. So please beware when you're driving. It's a serious situation. Also, I missed on my communications section of the agenda today. I received two communications today from individuals that have seen teens or younger driving golf carts and/or mini scooters on the street. They are extremely dangerous. And I don't think that pre-teens and younger individuals that are driving golf carts and motor scooters on the highway are thinking about driving as a task. They're thinking about having a good time and what could go wrong until something goes wrong. So for the sake of those individuals, be extremely careful, especially in Palos Heights at the intersections. Nobody seems to slow down, and very few people seem to stop. On another note, a safety scam, scam safety, I should say, tonight, we'll talk about IRS scams. The IRS scams hit elderly people more than anyone else. I guess they can strike fear in our minds more than anything. A couple of things you should be aware of with IRS scams is that they basically almost always try to text you or email you. They might, but they might phone call you. Unfortunately, they never, the IRS never used to mail you notifications of some problem with your tax returns, but now they are. And unfortunately also, thanks to advanced photo editing software, the scammers can produce a document that looks very real. And if you're not expecting a document in the mail from the IRS, you might be taken in by the scam. Best thing to do if you receive such an email, such a mail, is to call the phone number on the screen. That's the real phone number for the IRS. Do not call the phone number that's on the scam letter. It has a different area code, and it will be a different number, obviously. It'll be the scam, a scam number. So if you get a letter in the, in the mail from the IRS, in the upper or lower right-hand corner of your letter, there will be a code. All you have to do is call that number, call the IRS, and they'll verify your letter, if it's a scam or if it's for real. Some things to note, this, IRS will never ask you for money. They will never threaten to deport you. They will never threaten to send some of your door and arrest you. That's part of the scam. If you see those things in a letter, you know that's an automatic scam. IRS will make contact with an individual for very few reasons. One is that you have a balance due. Two is that you are due a different refund. They might ask some, for more some detail on your tax return, or the IRS might want to verify your identity. The IRS has changed your tax return, or the IRS is notifying you of delays in your tax return. The IRS is not in the business of giving money away. So for example, if you receive a letter that says something like, congratulations, after reviewing your tax return, the IRS has decided to grant you a special tax return of $1,000 or some such thing. They're not about to give you anything for nothing. So be aware, be cautious, be prepared. You get scams from the IRS, from the IRS scammers on your email, you'll get them on your telephone, and you'll get them in your U.S. mail. The best thing to do for all of them, I would suggest, is ignore them. If you have a real problem with the real IRS, they're bound to contact you again. A scammer will not contact you again because he's probably on a robo list. So beware, be cautious, be alert. Thank you. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, Alderman Basso. Municipal grounds and property, Alderman Begley.
No report, Mayor.
Planning and zoning, Alderman McGovern.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item 11 on the agenda, a motion to adopt an ordinance allowing Seva Brands Management Office to operate as a B1 use in a B district specifically at 11855 Southwest Highway and contained within PIN number 232430033640s.
Move by Alderman McGovern, second by Alderman McGrogan. Discussion. Roll call.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Begley.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Just one caveat on that, in the meeting, that the signage or any signage to be placed in that building should not be more than six inches in height over code.
Right. Okay.
Thank you. Item 12, okay, motion to adopt an ordinance allowing a six-foot privacy fence to extend beyond the southern building line to the south property line along the one block, one lot block, excuse me, of 126th Street in lieu of the required zero feet beyond, beyond the front building line thence easterly to the east property line, thence northerly along the east property line to the north property line for the principal residence located at 1256168th Court and contained within PIN number 243032500740s. That's a court, this is a corner lot, just so you get a general information out of the whole thing. It's a corner lot, and he's trying to get a fence line put around his whole.
Move by Alderman McGovern, second by Alderman Clifford.
Just to clear up, I filled in on this. Just so people know, there's a lot of east-west there ends beyond that. It's pretty basic, 68th Court. And on the one side, on the east side of the street, the street goes to, for about maybe 35, 40 feet that ends.
Goes right to his driveway.
Yeah, there's nothing there. And so on the north side of the house, he's coming by code off the corner of the house, proceeding to his lot line on the north, going to the south, where there's a row. He'll stop at the right of way until the final deeds and that are done. Then he'll own that, and he can continue to the back south line. Then over to the south, up across the driveway where a gate will be installed, nine feet back from that corner of the house. And that would be, so basically like this. That's it.
Okay. You second that?
Second.
Okay. Any questions? Roll call.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
No more. I'm done. Thank you.
Alderman Key, Recreation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve contract amendment number one and payment of $2,500 to JSD Professional Services, Inc., for additional meetings and master plan revisions for the Misty Meadows Park project.
Move by Alderman Key, second by Alderman Violet. Discussion.
Yes. So I have a question. Like, when originally, when this contract came in, and we discussed it, and there were some yes and no votes on it, and I personally voted no, even though Misty Meadows is where I live. One of the things that concerned me in the contract after reviewing it was the fact that they had stipulations about additional, because it was around, and you can correct me, Jeff, if I'm wrong, wasn't the contract around 17-5 or something in that neighborhood?
Um...
I mean, you know, it's irrelevant, but it was in that neck of the woods. And we had a discussion about how, because there was a clause in there that said that they would be able to charge us for each additional visit to the site and other inspections, which, when you're in the construction business like this company is, that can be quite a few. So we kicked that around, if I recall, and said, okay, we'll get that out of there so that we have kind of a set price on the contract, which we should, because otherwise it could get out of hand. And so when I saw this, this kind of goes in the opposite direction of what I thought we agreed to in a prior meeting here amongst some of us. And I don't know if any other Alderman read.
Well, after the meet, this is all in response to the public meetings that were held out there.
Yes.
They needed some additional stuff done because of, with the participants involved.
But, Mayor, what we didn't want to do is get this thing so that, you know, they could keep billing us for additional visits and additional meetings and stuff to the site. I mean, all I would like to know is, is this going to be a one-time additional $2,500, which would get us up to $20,000, to have them say this would be a nice looking curve?
This is for what's being done in response to the public meetings that were held on the site with principals and the...
Right. But even, think about what I just said, though. Originally, you said we were going to cap it. There wasn't going to be any additional fees, and that was going to be out of the contract.
We changed it. We changed it after the meetings. That's why this is on.
Well, it didn't come through the committee. This group didn't change it, not to my knowledge. I mean, I'm paying attention to Misty Meadows because I live there.
If we want it done, this will change it. I mean, the people came back and said they wanted some changes. This is where the changes come into play.
Right. I just don't want, every time these people go out to see the site, that we spend a couple of thousand dollars because it's a waste of time.
No, this is not for site visits, the only thing you're talking about. This is specifically for redoing some of the drawings, if I'm mistaken.
This is not the design company asking for this. This is us asking for this.
I think there were some specific requests, if you don't mind, Jeff.
Yep.
I think there was requests made to less hockey imagery, the park equipment, more gender-neutral on the park equipment. That was my observation, just from other meetings that we attended, is why I believe that these changes were made. And so it's not like an ongoing, every time that they have a site visit or anything like that. But these were very substantive changes.
So we'll be careful with the contracts, because if it's, every time they do a change order, like if they say they're going to move the net from one side of the fence to the other, we don't want to be spending all this money.
And that's why this, yeah, and that's why this is coming back, because this is a subsequent change.
We were actually trying to accommodate the residents.
I know. I was there.
Yeah.
You guys did a nice job. But I'm just saying that, you know, I thought it was going to be an all-in, we'll do this for you for X number of dollars, we'll, you know, go from A to Z, and we won't have any additional, you know, because really, in these construction projects, change orders will kill you. And...
Yes, that's how they make money. That's why we use a construction management company on the record when we expand it.
Right. Well, just be careful. I mean...
Yep.
No, it's a good, it's a very valid point.
Yep. Okay. Any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
I give the kind of, I...
I think everyone in the room agrees with you. We don't want to be spending money at...
And I just want to stipulate that I think that's what it was. I think that was my understanding based on the meeting attendance.
You know what Alderman McGrogan said, is some undocumented change orders can really eat into your budget, and some of the change orders are just for the maintain, not warranted. And that's what he's saying. You've got to keep it, to keep an eye on the reason for these change orders, or to request those change orders to help keep the cost down and bring it in within budget. Correct?
Yeah, that's exactly right. I mean, you know, anybody that's done any work to your house, the last thing I want to do is give the contractor a blank check and have them fill it out for you, because it can get pretty expensive. So, I just want to keep an eye on things.
Yep. Secondly, I'd like to make a motion to approve the first installment payment for the 2122 membership to the Southwest Special Recreation Association, which is SWISRA, in the amount of $43,698.50. This is the first installment. We make two each year. This is money that the city receives from the state, and we turn it around and give it to the association.
Second.
Move by Alderman Key, second by Alderman Clifford. Discussion? Roll call?
Alderman Lewandowski?
Aye.
Alderman Begley?
Aye.
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
Yes.
Alderman Vasso?
Aye.
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
And thirdly, I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the open space and land acquisition and development, which is known as Oglaz Grant Program.
Second.
Move by Alderman Key, second by Alderman Violet. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And then lastly, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Orchard Park Master Plan with Upland Design.
Second.
Move by Alderman Key, and second by Alderman Clifford. Roll call?
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
Alderman Vasso?
Aye.
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
Alderman Begley?
Aye.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski?
Aye.
And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Rules of construction, Alderman Clifford?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A motion to approve partial payment to MNJ Asphalt Saving Company for the MFT Road Program in the amount of $371,509.96.
Second.
Move by Alderman Clifford, second by Alderman McGrogan. Discussion? Roll call?
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman Vasso?
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski?
Aye.
Alderman Begley?
Aye.
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
Next, a motion to approve Morris Engineering invoices totaling $78,668.34.
Move by Alderman Clifford, your second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Vasso? Discussion? Roll call?
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski?
Aye.
Alderman Begley?
Aye.
Alderman Vasso?
Aye.
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
Okay, I got a, I'd like to move the summary of public comment on the discussion, 123rd Street sidewalk, Palmer Park to 76th Avenue to the end of the agenda, because there's some comments that have to be made from the residents on that. And I, I just want to move the agenda along.
Okay.
Also, I have one announcement from our Public Works Director. Please see the attached memo. We are well-stocked with our local road salt for the 2122, 22 season. However, the price of salt will most likely increase this year. And in a memorandum regarding from the units of local government to us, rock salt for 2021, the communications are forming at the Illinois Department of Central Management Services will be execute, will not be executing any renewals for the road salt 2021 winter cycle. CMS is working to secure new contracts for this year to meet your local road salt needs as quickly as we can. Put it bluntly, there's more to it. Put it bluntly, they're not going to enter those contracts to renegotiate them at probably higher prices. What Adam's saying here is that the city, through the management of the Public Works Department, is well ahead of it, pretty well stocked, and it won't, should not affect us at any. And that's due to the situation in Louisiana with the salt shortage. So, that's pretty much where that, that comes in. And I'll take up the other issue at the end of the water and sewer. Thank you.
All right. License permits?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one item on the agenda this evening, item number 20, a motion to approve a permanent sign request for JC Light Benjamin Moore at 12345 South Harlem Avenue.
Second.
Move by Alderman Lewandowski, second by Alderman McGovern.
Mr. Mayor, a portion of the sign is five inches above the code, and the other portion of the sign, the lettering, is four inches above the code.
Any questions? Roll call?
Alderman Begley?
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
Alderman Vasso?
Aye.
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski?
Aye.
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I have.
Okay. Alderman Violet, water and sewer?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Alderman Clifford, back to you.
I'm up?
Yep.
Yeah.
You said after water and sewer. This is after water and sewer.
I was requested, or Adam called me, our Public Works Director, if it would be okay to add this onto the agenda. The last committee meeting, we had a public discussion, had flyers put out to the people that lived along 123rd Street, those basically most affected by the project there, to give them an update of what we're doing, or what's, what's going on, and what's to be considered. With that, they asked if we give a summary of the public comment along 123rd Street, and the plans, any plans for street sidewalks from Palmer Park to 76th Avenue. As you know, a short summary of that, right now, there's extensive work of drainage, public utilities, gas lines, and a rebuild of 123rd Street from Harlem to 76th Avenue. Basically, a connector thoroughfare going from one street over to the other street that goes from 135th to 130, or Rod 83 to 135th. So, it makes it a little easier to get around. It's scheduled to be done at the end of November, and there was a discussion, and it was brought up, again, I was asked, but I brought it on there for discussion, that if anything of sidewalks or connector were to be involved in that, now is the time to bring that up to be cost-effective. For if the meeting was, if this was to be approved or not approved, if it was, and there was a need, right now, it would cost roughly $75,000, which is in the coffers. If not, and it happens five to six years from now, and that need is still warranted, and this city council may not be here, and other city councils may have a different opinion, it will cost six times that, five to six times that, according to our Public Works Director. So, with that, I had flyers put out, which most of the people here probably got, notifying you of that, and trying to get their opinion if they thought there was a warranted use or not. And that's why this is up now. Being, being that said, that's pretty much the summary of what went on there. There was a few things. There was a letter from our mayor. There was a general affidavit for someone who said he didn't want sidewalks, but he'd rather have a bicycle path, which takes up even more room. And then there was, and some positive statements by our mayor, and the reason it was warranted. So, with that, I guess that's pretty much where we are, where we're at with this, and we're trying to get some input of where to proceed on this, and that's why the public...
Well, if we could go back...
So, I'll turn it over to the mayor, and he'll explain.
The situation is, obviously, the road is starting to go in there, and it came down to where, if, if in fact, we're ever going to put a sidewalk, we're going to have a sidewalk going from Harlem Avenue to Palmer Park. The division is, at some point in time, and we've started this, you know, we've got sidewalks now, pretty much down College Drive, 127th Street. Ridgeland, we've got the bike path, our multi, you know, purpose path that goes along Ridgeland. We've picked up some on Harlem Avenue where we've had some gaps. It's not totally done, but for the most part, we were trying to get some connectivity. The idea was that 123rd Street would be a natural for, if you're going north and south, you know, then cross 127th Street, east and west, College Drive, east and west. The next place to go would be 123rd Street, because at some point in time, we may come down 76th Avenue. And that's, and this is not coming anytime soon, but I mean, that would be the next place to go, would be down from College Drive to 127th Street to connect Lake Catherine to the schools, to the bike path that's to the west of it, and so 123rd would be the natural. The idea was that since the street is already torn up, as Jack had mentioned, it was $75,000. Well, in fact, through the Southwest Conference of Mayors, through using federal matching funds, we probably can get a, we only paid, could only pay 20% of that, which would be $15,000, as opposed to the $75,000 we do through the federal government. So, the idea was, let's just get some input. I wanted to get the input from, you know, I, we did get some of the input from the residents, and I respect those totally, but I'd like to get some input also from the Aldermen, what their feelings are. We're not going to vote on this tonight. I just, this is trying to get an idea of which way to go. Is it worth it or not? I mean, it's the kind of thing where we've got a shot to do this now, you know, it's not the end of the world if we don't do it. I mean, but I think cost-effectively, it makes sense to do it now. You know, there's a lot of people walking in the streets. I mean, I live on 119th Place. I mean, my, going up and down my street, going to White Hen Pantry, or 7-Eleven, you know, I've got people all day long, which, and that's fine. I mean, you know, is there some problem with cars going through there? Sure. Sidewalk would make it a lot easier, safer for the kids. And this would be the same thing. It would be safer to get to the park, you know, someone who lives at 121st and 70th, say Richards, they can walk down to 123rd Street and then go to the park, instead of going through all the side streets. I mean, and that, that's the reason for it. It's just logically, it makes some sense, and I realize that the people who live along there, you know, it's, it's a sidewalk in front of your house, which is not normal. The intention is never to put sidewalk, at least my intention, as long as I'm going to be around here, which is, who knows how long that will be, but to put sidewalks throughout all of Palo's sites. This is just a grid work that kind of runs through town, and makes it easy for connectivity with their existing sidewalks on, you know, on the outsides and across. And that's all this is. So, I mean, that's what I'm trying to do, is get some input from the, from the Aldermen as far as if it's worth, you know, even going further.
Mr. Mayor, on, on one evening last week, the Beautification Committee in town met, and one of the things that they do is try to have events to, and beautify the city, but, you know, having events like the car show and stuff is to bring people into the downtown area. The discussion of moving throughout the city, just like you're saying, does come up occasionally. They had asked a question about 123rd Street, because it's so, you know, looks like a war zone right now. And so, I explained to them, and there were probably 12 of us or 14 of us in the room, and I explained that, you know, this was a possibility, but the, that roads in construction know, was looking at it. No one has voted on anything. They were just receiving information. The comments at that committee were all very positive towards doing it. It was people from all four wards of the city. I encouraged them to send you emails with their opinions. That's, that's what I wanted to let you know. So, if you receive some emails, it's from out of that committee that I said, you know, if, if you have an opinion either way, you have to let the mayor know, so.
Anybody else?
Sure. When I moved here 19 years ago, I moved here from Evergreen Park, which has sidewalks, and I had a six-month-old daughter and another one on the way, going to be born like the following year. It was a concern to me. I mean, I was raised in Chicago, and then, you know, I lived in Evergreen Park for 18 years, and the idea of having babies, and then toddlers, and then youngsters, you know, in a community without sidewalks, was concerning. However, I grew to like it. I mean, it's what we are. We don't have, we have put in some sidewalks on our through streets, but we don't have sidewalks on our residential streets, and I would prefer to leave it that way. I never felt unsafe. My daughters never felt unsafe. Both of them are now in college. One was delivered to college just this, this past weekend, and moving around town has, has never, has never been an issue. We actually have, I, I've been an Alderman for eight years, and I remember Alderman and the mayor chuckling when we have our mayor for a day, because when we have our mayor for a day, our, our mayor, our student mayors and Aldermen and such, always ask for sidewalks and streetlights. We don't have sidewalks, sidewalks and streetlights, and we've always said, "Well, that's who we are." And, I mean, it's, we're not really a rural community, but we are a community that has, you know, a lot of culverts, and, I mean, we don't have a developed sewer system, and, and we are what we are. I see people walking in our streets probably as much as I see walking on sidewalks in communities that have sidewalks, and we're used to working our way around them, and, and that's the way we've lived for 19 years. That's, that's the way my family has lived for 19 years. And I would like to continue being the way we are. Thank you. So, like Alderman Violet, many of us have been here for a long time. We've lived in the city without streets, and it's interesting, especially Jerry McGovern right next to me lives in Oak Hills. They just had an occurrence the other day, over the weekend, where somebody lost control of the car, almost hit people on the golf course. Alderman Vasso just had a comment about distraction of, with people using their cell phones and other devices and not paying attention, especially young kids. Most people, when they get their driver's license, I know an insurance guy bet me any amount of money that my kids would have an accident within six months, and he collected every time. And, but what I was thinking, you know, because there's two sides to the issue, and that's why there's people in this room, is that, on the other hand, we just had some pretty good news on all our financials. The city's in great shape, one of the best-run cities in the whole South suburbs, if not the whole air, the whole city. We have a bunch of money set up in all these different accounts, and that's how, when the treasurer gave the report about where we have 19-plus million dollars. A lot of it, we've, it's set aside for all these different occurrences that can happen for, in the city, rainy day funds, you know, sewers that break, all sorts of things that[1586.89]
Rainy day funds, you know, sewers that break, um, all sorts of things that go on that, you know, as you said, we spent like, you know, three million dollars or something in expenses. I think that we'd be penny wise and pound foolish, even though we've gotten along without sidewalks, to maybe invest in this four to five-block ser, sequence and spend the money because it is close to a park. We, uh, would hate to see, like, one child or one person injured. It would be, you know, we'd have a room full of people saying, I told you so, we should have put the sidewalks in. And to me, and actually even on the way here, on Seventy-Sixth Avenue, there were a couple of kids riding on their bikes on Seventy-Sixth Avenue with their arms out like we all used to do when we were younger, with no hands on the handlebars. I had to dodge around them because the kids swerved at the last second because they didn't realize I was right behind them. And so I, I just really feel that if we, if we're ever gonna do it, now would be the time. We have the money and, you know, we've been, we hear of all these different accidents that are happening. And it is a, a park, and the mayor said we do have other plans for the future that maybe it would all tie together. Would be an extremely expensive operation to do the whole city at one time. One of the Aldermen told me, he ran some numbers. Jack, was it like, how many, how many million? It was a lot. I mean, the streets, the sidewalks throughout the whole city.
If the number, it's just, if, let's just say, and it's never gonna happen, that they wanted to put sidewalks up and down every street in the city or whatever. The taxation or the levy that would replace it would be astronomical on there, and it'd be, wouldn't be affordable. What they're saying here, and Alderman Violet's right, and there's the thing about character, the neighborhood and everything, but certain things they're talking about are connector routes for safety to get from, say Harlem, Seventy-Sixth here. Nothing going up and down the streets or the middle of the neighborhoods. That's never gonna happen because it's cost prohibitive. You would have to move so many utilities, even on parts of Seventy-Sixth Avenue, that might be cost prohibitive. Because you have to move things. You have to move the culvert systems. You have to move the drainage systems. You have to take all of these things into consideration. You don't may wave a magic wand and all of a sudden, poof, it's done. Is it safe? Yes. Each and every one here, ourselves here, have to ask, is it safe for the kids' access to that park? Because right now, the sidewalk is going from Harlem to the east side of the parking lot on one hundred twenty-third. If you notice, that parking lot's like a U. It's only going to the east side. So, the question, 'cause do you want to at least continue it from the west side to the corner? That wasn't in the plan. It was only to the east side. So, when that came up, Adam, when he was in contact, said, he was, he was asked if you were gonna do this with the construction company and that, it would be within cost advisable to do it now, if you're considering it all, rather than later, which would, will cost you six to seven times more. And that might be bond issues or this or that. Would I ever support a big, long program all over where it's gonna cost people? No. I wanna pay that rec center off first. I don't want bonds and taxation things hanging over you. But if it's for public safety or something for a small little area, that's a different story. But it will never happen with, I'll guarantee you, it will never happen within the interstices of Old Town, East Old Town, West Old Town, or anywhere else. Repairing sidewalks in Old Westgate where they are? Possibly. Connecting from Ridgeon or going down Ridgeon to the bike path, which is already in progress? Yes. From one hundred twenty-seventh over from Harlem to access the rec center to fill in those spots? Yes. There are sidewalks now on one hundred twenty-seventh that need to be filled in from Harlem to there. That'll probably be filled in. As long as we've done a long road eighty-three here, you've probably seen the streets coming along that way to get you over, over to Community Park and things like that.
Already there.
Pardon?
It's already there.
That's what I mean. We fill them in.
Well, actually, to go back to the question, in all those cases you're talking about, the taxpayers didn't pay anything for it. We did this whole thing from Harlem Avenue to, uh, Country Square. We got the, uh, RTA paid for eighty percent of it, and the selfless conference and mayor's paid the other twenty percent, so.
No, I know that. I'm just saying.
Just telling the general public too. I mean, the idea is, the only way to do this is cost effectively. You can't do it that way. It's not worth it.
Oh, no, that's right. And I know all of that. And then people know that. I'm just talking about if there was a thing around thinking there was gonna be this big expansion of that, that, that would not be feasible. All the other stuff has been, been done within budgets or grants and that. So, with that, I would just, we're here for one thing, as the mayor said, to get your opinion, yes or no. Would you think it's good? And eliminating out, we have to go to executive session later, and we got a few more things. That's why I moved it to here, so you could give a short opinion of yes or no, of what you think. So, with that.
Can I say one other thing?
Oh, no, I got a couple of things to say first.
Go ahead.
One more quick, quick thing. I, I think that if we were interested in the safety of children and specifically the safety of children in the Third Ward, I think the place that we would concentrate on first is the area between Harlem and the library. I don't live too far from the library. There are kids walking in the streets over there all the time. We have a sidewalk on Harlem, but we have no connector to the library. That should be the first thing we do, rather than a sidewalk to nowhere. Because that sidewalk to Seventy-Sixth Avenue is a sidewalk to nowhere right now. This at least would be a sidewalk to the library. And it would be, and it would make children more safe.
First off, first off, a sidewalk on Seventy-Sixth Avenue, we've already done that study, is totally impractical. Cost would be outstanding. It's no forget. Hundred and twenty-seventh Street to one hundred, to College Drive on Seventy-Sixth Avenue has no curbs, nothing at all. You got the drainage ditches. You'd have to cover them. You'd have to fill it in. You'd have to turn around and go all the way through. Totally impractical. It'd be cost, it'd be as cost-effective as six years later, what Jack's talking about, putting, putting sidewalks in, uh, from, from, uh, the park all the way around. Secondly, I walk this city. I walk this city probably close to every block in a month. I'm, it's nothing for me to walk five miles a day, walking here in town. I live out Oak Hills, and I still walk all the way down to Lake Catherine and walk around Lake Catherine, and then walk back, which is about eight miles. Alright? I don't see the need for sidewalks in this town. I walk it. I watch others walk it. They're perfectly safe. See two, three women walk in the streets, twelve o'clock, eleven o'clock in the morning, turn around and just gavin, gavin away and having a wonderful time. You know what? It makes, not only does it make it a neighborhood, it, it makes us family almost. Some of these places, this is such a gorgeous town the way it is. It doesn't need a change. Now, I would not allow, uh, even a bicycle path to go down Seventy-Sixth Avenue. I don't think it's a necessary thing. Now, if you want, if, if the, as far as going across one hundred and twenty-third Street to Seventy-Sixth Avenue, it's their point. Their, it's their homes. Okay? Let them be the deciding factor on that point. Palmer Park just got done remodeling. Whole front of it's all tore up again. We're gonna remod, remodeling it again and fixing it all at the right time, this, the right way this time. So, let the, but let the people that live on one hundred and twenty-third Street make this decision. That's it.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Looks like the chairman, do you have something to say, Chairman Clifford?
No, it's just, go ahead and finish your comments, but then I wanna give each one here and we'll find out.
So, I'm Brent Lorendowski, Alderman in the Third Ward, and sat patiently and let my fellow Aldermen give their comments. Um, just to backtrack just a little bit, I just wanna be clear that, um, this is, this is great governance. This is, this is government at its best, where we are way, we, there's nothing to decide today. There's no, there's no contracts. There's no contractor. There's no person ready to pour concrete down one hundred and twenty-third. This is, this is, um, us at the right time, asking feedback from the community, especially those affected here in the Third Ward, what you think about a limited sidewalk down one hundred and twenty-third Street. So, I, I'd also like to, you know, really center in on that, where we're talking about, you know, basically, a mile of sidewalk. Now, what, what everybody should understand as well is that this one hundred and twenty-third Street project that is all torn up and it looks like a war zone, um, all these Aldermen here voted for sidewalks in that, albeit for a block, but they do go across certain residences. Why do they go across certain residences? It makes sense to connect Harlem to the park. So, someone could come from Harlem and walk across sidewalk to the park. It makes sense. This discussion is happening because it makes sense. I reject the notion that we are what we are, and that's just all we'll ever be. We need to always think about improving our community and looking for, uh, things that we can, how we can grow the right way. I don't know if this is right or wrong, but the discussion is a hundred percent right. And it's important to get the feedback from the community. As Alderman McGovern said, the most important people, the people that stir my heart are the people that the sidewalk goes right through their front yard. You know, to me, that, uh, that's just how I think of things. That's weighted votes to me. Because I'm not trying to disturb any, or destroy anybody's life or change their life. Okay? What we're trying to do is improve this city step by step, get input, do it the right way, cost effect. I, I think it's important that we, we, when we look to the future, we look at the big picture. What do we want to be? And I don't think any Alderman on this, uh, dais would say, we want sidewalks up and down every block in, in Paleisites, let alone Old Town or in Third Ward. But looking at it, does it make sense to have some connectivity between Harlem and Seventy-Sixth Avenue? The parks, maybe that through street, one hundred twenty-third Street, certainly. One hundred and twenty-seventh, College Drive, Harlem, certainly. I've talked to residents in the Third Ward. When I first was running for office, the number one question, people wanted their stop signs back, especially on Seventy-Sixth Avenue. Now, whether or not that's gonna be effective in slowing down traffic remains to be seen. We have studies that said it hasn't, but people were concerned about their safety on the street. And the side, and removing the sidewalks, or excuse me, stop signs made them feel less safe. It is not just good governance, but it's our duty to investigate every opportunity to address some of the safety concerns of our residents. And that's what we're doing here today. And that's all we're doing, is discussing this and getting feedback.
Yeah, I just wanted to, very, very brief. I, I am here tonight to listen to what everyone has to say. Brent and I both represent the Third Ward. Um, I, I see all the different aspects of this argument. Um, and I just want you guys to know that we're taking it all into consideration in making our decision if, when it comes to that time. Okay? Thank you all.
Back to you, Jack.
Okay. Alright, with that, me and the chairman, I think we'll start with, anybody wants to make a short comment, yea or nay, that they would like it or not like it? And you live in the affected area, evidently you do, you got a flyer from there. So, any, uh, the lady in the green here?
I'm just here.
Pardon?
Just to listen.
Okay, you're just here to observe? The lady in the blue?
No, I'm glad.
No comment? The gentleman in the blue?
Yes.
Step to the podium, state your name and address. And if you could keep it short and direct, because we gotta.
As short and direct as this discussion was?
Well, this discussion wasn't short. What I mean is we're.
I will be. Thanks.
I'm just trying to get to the.
So, my name is Gary Kramer. I live on one hundred and twenty-third and Harold. The, the White House, uh, on the corner of one hundred and twenty-third and Harold. So, I heard a lot of the discussions. Uh, I'm an engineer by trade, and I understand the notion of master planning. What I haven't heard tonight is what we call optioneering. We keep talking about sidewalks, but I think one of the things that's not being, we're not being clear about is, the street is being widened by five feet. So, if the street is being widened by five feet, and it's been in place for fifty years, if we really did master planning, why wouldn't we consider widening the street by eight feet? And we talk about bike paths, not talking about a bike path, we're talking about a walking lane that's integrated into the street. This doesn't cost anything, or it costs the very, very minimal. It fits in with the landscape. It provides a safe passage for pedestrians, whether they're bicycles or walkers, what have you. Someone will say, but sidewalks provide a segregated safe zone for folks. Talked about stop signs. We've lived on one hundred and twenty-third for fifteen years, and I can tell you, people fly down our road. Yep? If stop signs aren't the answer, are we considering speed bumps? I know if I go down this road with a speed bump, it's not gonna take long for me to figure out, I gotta go slow. I have no choice. So, I really, what I haven't heard from the council and from the Aldermen is, why aren't we considering viable options? Yeah? That don't carve into further property. They don't require culverts moving. Maybe they do in some cases. I'm not exactly sure. But I think about, not bike path, I think about, you're making the road wider already. Put a lane for pedestrians there. And I'm not hearing any of that. Yeah? And that's why I'm here tonight. I'm not for sidewalks because it's just gonna carve into more property. And we've been okay without them. But if we're gonna spend money, we got federal money to widen the road, well, put the bike lane right in the widened road. And that hasn't been discussed as an option. That's what I wanted to share with you.
Thank you.
Lady in the white, right?
Oh, no.
Here with the gentleman in the turquoise shirt, or light blue shirt, or green shirt?
Thank you. I'm at a hundred and seventy. I'm in the, in the, in the lane there. And there's no, uh, and I'm two-hundred percent against putting any sidewalks, any bike paths, anything in the area. It's just not necessary. The notion that this is gonna improve public safety is absurd. Show me any study that says this is, uh, gonna improve the safety. I've been there twenty-two years. I spent thousands of hours on my porch, watching people go up and down the street. You're gonna put a sidewalk in there, and everybody's gonna be walking on the, on the streets though. It's just, it's just a bad idea. It's not necessary. Um, and I don't think we need to do it. And that's where I'm at.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gentleman next, or a lady next to this gentleman?
I'm not.
The gentleman next to the lady in the back row, by the door? I can't see over that door. Lady next to the door. Thank you.
My name is Peg Gera. I live at, uh, one hundred and twenty-third and Seventy-second Court. My question is, who's supposed to maintain these sidewalks? Are the people where it goes by their land, are they supposed to shovel them and keep them that way? I mean, because once again, Paleisites feel good at doing things sometimes, but keeping it up. And we're putting an extra burden on these people, not only taking some of their land, but then they're gonna have to be out there shoveling all the time. And I think we need to keep that into consideration, would we want it in front of our house?
Okay, thank you. I take it that's a no then?
Yes. Yes, that or no.
Thank you. Just trying to keep track.
And with the widened street, the snowplows can plow that.
Well, the widened streets, when that came in, the sidewalks, when the street came in, there was no discussion. The sidewalk things came in long after. They were just gonna widen the street. Then all of a sudden, an idea came up that they wanted to do this, and that's why it got to the point where it is now. There was, like I said, I got an affidavit, just relating to what you're saying. They, the lady sent an affidavit, they don't want sidewalk, but they rather that bicycle path, so, you know, it goes both ways. But we're here just to get a consensus from the people here that are mostly directed. So, the lady or the gentleman there?
Yeah, Jim Stevens, I'm tied on one hundred and twenty-third and Seventy. I'm at one hundred and twenty-third and Seventy-third Avenue. My name is Jim Stevenson. I'm definitely against the sidewalks. Um, I'm with the two gentlemen with the, uh, in the blue. Definitely, we could widen it a little bit more and then put a, a walking path, instead of cutting in more into the people's properties. And once again, who's gonna shovel this? Who's gonna maintain it?
Well, the city, I mean, nothing's a done deal, but as far as the maintenance go, anything the city puts in becomes city property. They would be, you have to maintain it, whether it's sidewalk asphalt or whatever, so you know, not you.
Well, I used to live in the city, in, in Chicago, and that wasn't the city. It was the people who the sidewalk was. And so, how much is that gonna be different now?
Shoveling this? No, no. Yeah, but that's a no then.
Definitely no.
Thank you.
Jack, we don't maintain sidewalks.
Huh?
City does not maintain sidewalks. We don't shovel snow from sidewalks.
Well, no.
Anyway. So, if we put in a sidewalk, the city would not maintain a sidewalk.
Well, there were, no, I know they don't maintain them. What I mean by maintain them is if they got cracked up or disarrayed. I don't mean shovel them.
I mean shovel them. City does not shovel sidewalks at all.
I, I know that. I, I know they don't. I'm saying if they got people that had to be replaced. So, gentleman there or next? Who didn't speak yet? Who didn't speak yet? Who wants to go? Anybody wants to say anything?
Sure. Brian Nolan, one hundred and twenty-third and Seventy-Fifth Avenue. Uh, my wife and I are against the sidewalk. Think that it's going to make the property look terrible. I like Mr. Kramer's idea. I think that we should be looking at other options for achieving a similar result. Does it make sense in light of the, the cost-effective way it could be done right now? Sure. But I, yeah, I just, I don't want it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, gentleman right here?
Yeah.
State your name and address.
Martin's and White, one hundred and twenty-third and Harold. One hundred, one hundred twenty, yeah, one hundred twenty-third and Harold. I was here last week. Said no at that time, and I've been listening to some of you folks talking. And I agree with your comment about, it's, it's a, it's, it's been twenty years this way, no sidewalks. And it's part of who we are. And I agree with your, with your comments about, I walk and I bike through these streets all the time. And we take care. And we, yes, there are issues involving like stop signs or some, uh, speed bumps, I think would be something to consider. I don't, I, I don't think we need that sidewalk. And as you said, right now, it's a sidewalk and, it's, it's gonna stop at Seventy-Sixth.
Yeah, alright.
So, I'm no. Okay, thank you.
Anybody didn't get it, wanted to make a comment? Seems to be none, none at all. The reason you're here is to, just the reason we're here, to get your public input, and that's why we're here. The sidewalks, one and done deal. We're trying to be above board. I said, Adam sent two notifications, so everyone was aware of what the city was possibly looking into. And that's why you're giving your input here as homeowners, taxpayers, and getting an opinion of, would it be supported or would it not be supported? And I thank you for.
What are the next steps? You've received our input.
There's no vote on this tonight, that's why.
So, what will be the plan?
And, and we're taking in the comments, as the gentleman said about if the street was being wide, that'd be a stripe on the side, become like a dedicated bike, bike road or, or bike area, but whatever. And that will go back to our city engineer, and he'll look and review all of that, so. Okay, with that, I have no more comments, so I guess, Mr. Mayor, let's, you have something to say?
If I could, I, I appreciate this, and I would say, as someone who's been really affected, the crew and the teams, they, from my perspective, not speaking on the A and on our twenty-third, but the crews and everybody involved has been very professional, very open. Yeah, they're doing their job. I, I would ask this.
I would ask this, as far as my wife's kind of about next steps, we got a flyer the night before last week's meeting. We got a flyer last night for this page. So, if you really want, like, thoughtful input, like, have a little bit more, like, a little more lead time, a little more reflection, maybe a separate discussion about, that's what I'm asking for.
Yeah. Sir, the reason that is, and excuse that you didn't get it in a more timely fashion, that it was put, I was, because I inherited, I used to do zoning. Now I do this. And I just took it, so I'm moving along with it. I was asked, could, like, a few days before, could I have that on agenda for discussion? And I said, sure, I don't see the harm, but I want the people notified of it, there's going to be discussion. That's why, and the thing, the same thing came with this one, could this be added for more discussion and input? I again said yes, and that's why you didn't get it here. But you did get it, and you're here, and I'm sorry, you know, we'll try to do better, but it was just best I could do on such short notice I got myself, so, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Mayor, do you have anything to add to that? With that, I'll close the comments.
No, that's all. Thank you for your comments.
So, should we be planning on being at the next village?
If there one, you'll be notified.
Okay, so.
If there's going to be more, if there's going to be more public discussion on this, yes, you will be notified, and hopefully a few more days in advance. Okay? With that, I close public discussion and move on to the agenda.
All right. Thanks again for all your discussion. Appreciate it. So, we've got special committees, Alderman Key.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the Chamber of Commerce is going to hold their Health and Business Expo again this year. Been several years. This is the event that normally took place the day before the half marathon, and it's going to happen at the rec center on August twenty-eighth, from eight o'clock in the morning until one o'clock. And they're focusing on thanking our first responders and emphasizing the need to shop local and dine local. And so, it's nice to have that event back on the calendar. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Cable TV, Alderman McGovern.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the only thing I have to mention is Comcast is down, okay? Our Comcast, live broadcasts are down. Channel four is going to be recording. We'll play it later, after it gets edited and turned around. They fix it all up. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Any old business? Citizens wishing to address the council, I think we did a lot already. New business? Move to go to the executive session regarding personnel?
Second.[1789.03]